The Committee of the Whole Meeting for June 3, 2025 is hereby called to order. Will the Clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Barrero.
Here.
Alderwoman Garza.
Here.
Alderman Masiacos.
Present.
Alderman Nunez.
Here.
Alderman Franco.
Here.
Alderman Seville.
Here.
Alderman Benuevos.
Here.
Alderwoman Smith.
Here.
Alderman Bug.
Here.
Alderwoman Bade.
Here.
Alderman Larson.
Here.
And Mayor Lash is present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The first agenda item, will the Clerk please read, 25-0445?
Twenty-five zero four five five, approval of the Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes of Tuesday, May 20, 2025.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the Tuesday, May 20, 25, Committee of the Whole Meeting as presented?
Second.
A motion made by Alderwoman Smith, seconded by Alderman Franco. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstained.
That's ten in favor, one abstention.
Yes, I was not here, Mayor.
No problem. Motion carried by voice vote. Okay, for this evening, the Mayor's Report, we have three presentations, and then we also have a ceremonial swearing-in for Alderman White. He did do the official swearing-in the night that he was appointed, so he could go through the orientation process and then join us tonight as a full member of the council. But we wanted to make sure that his family had an opportunity to be part of this experience. So we are going to go through a short ceremonial swearing-in, some photographs, and then he's going to share some remarks with the Aurora community and introduce himself. So if you'll join me in the pit, we'll take care of that.
Nothing's opening right now.
Are you able to open the agenda?
I think if you're already in. I refresh and try to get back in, but it has not let me.
Yes.
It just said loading.
Yeah.
You all raise your right hand. I will, White.
I will, White.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of Alderman of the City of Aurora.
The duties of the office of the Alderman of the City of Aurora.
At large.
At large.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my abilities.
Okay, thank you. And before we, before we take photos, we want to give Alderman White a few moments to reflect on this experience and to introduce himself to the Aurora community and to the rest of the council that some have met, but some have not.
Appreciate it, Mayor Lash. So Mayor Lash, the fellow Alder people, I really appreciate the opportunity to serve in this capacity, the City of Aurora. I see service as my life's calling, it's what I do in every capacity, whether serving in the community, serving in office right now apparently, and serving in industry. Service is my calling. And really, what I want to do in this role is to bring my experience in education, workforce development, and financial management, and help the City of Aurora grow and become a vibrant community, become more vibrant, and also support the fellow Alder people in ensuring that we can move the City of Aurora forward and become not just the second-largest city in Illinois, but seen as a city every city in Illinois wants to be like.
And John, if you want to have anybody move forward a couple of pictures, if everybody wants to come forward a little bit, that's great. Do some with me, and then I'll get out of the way. All right, here we go, one, two, and three.
Okay. Yeah. Vamadere.
Here we go, one, two, three. And Alderman White will join us on the dais, let the record reflect that Alderman White is here. Before we get into the three agenda items, Department of Communications, Tony Martinez, just wants to share some upcoming events this weekend. It's Pride Month, so take it away.
That's right, it's Pride Month. It's going to be a very, very active weekend for everyone in here in the City of Aurora. So starting, starting on Friday, we have the Pride Flag Raising at eleven, from 11:00 a.m. at One Aurora Plaza, followed by the Flag Raising, it's First Friday in Aurora, so there's a lot to do throughout downtown from 5:00 to 9:00. Just make sure to get out to First Fridays, there's, you know, businesses involved, a lot of activities throughout the downtown area. It's going to hopefully be some, some great weather, great experiences for all. Right out on Water Street Mall, there's a Business Entrepreneur Unity Expo from 5:00 to 10:00 as part of the First Friday. There's actually even a house music gathering by Dance Views on 75 South Broadway Street on Friday also. On Saturday, we have the opening of the Farmer's Market in downtown, downtown Aurora Water Street Mall there, or 65 South Water Street. This is the 114th season for the Farmer's Market, which is the oldest Farmer's Market in the state of Illinois. So from 8:00 to 12:00, the Farmer's Market will be open, there will be musicians, obviously local vendors, some extra activities, family activities for the opening this weekend. At 12:00 p.m. at Wilder Park and Promenade, the Family Counseling Service, Family Fest will be taking place at Wilder and, and the Promenade there from 12:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. So right after, enjoy the Farmer's Market, head over to Wilder Plaza to join the Family Counseling Service Center there. And then, to end off the evening, we have Pride at the Plaza with the, sponsored by the LGBTQ Advisory Board. So there, it's going to be on the eve of, of the Pride Parade on Sunday, there'll be live music, there'll be a couple of shows, a couple of food trucks. Really, it's just going to be an exciting event. There is a suggested donation of five dollars that'll go to the Denny Mellon Scholarship Fund. So make sure to make your, make your way out to the Plaza there. Really, it's going to be fun for, for all ages, a couple of shows, and great food, you know, food for all. Then Sunday is really the capstone of everything for the Pride activities this week, and we have the Pride Parade, which will kick off at 12:00 p.m. right here in downtown Aurora, so make sure to wear your bright colors and come and enjoy the activities for the Pride Parade. It's always a great turnout, always great weather, so, you know, great to enjoy with all the residents of Aurora and the surrounding communities. And that's all I have for our report.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. So we have three parts of the Mayor's Report that are pretty significant items, that have, two of them have come before, or are coming before committees. But the first is, shortly after taking office, our office received communication from the U.S. Census Bureau that the count would be back on. Initially, we did not even have access to talk to the U.S. Census Bureau, but after some back and forth, Shannon was able to open up a dialogue with them to go over some facts, and so we wanted to bring the City Council up to speed on what is happening with that. We do have a recommendation at the end, and there'll be an opportunity to discuss, to discuss it briefly. But I think we wanted to give a council awareness of what was going on with the census recount, so.
Thank you, Mayor. Hello, everyone, my name is Shannon Cameron, I'm Chief of Staff for the Mayor's Office. As Mayor Lash said, just a few days after Mayor Lash took office, we received notice from the Census Bureau that we had our special census date. However, we were not allowed to communicate with them, we called and they said we were, they were not authorized to speak to us about the matter. But we were able to get a meeting with them on May 25, and since then, they have opened up communication. So those of you, I know that we have several people on the dais that are new, so there's, I'm just going to give you a bit of background on this. So in 2020, we did, you know, the usual census, obviously, we had restrictions at that time due to the coronavirus, people sheltering at home, not wanting to get sick. And then also, there was some question about whether a census question would be on there around citizenship. So there was some nervous anxiety in the community. In 2021, when we got our count back, it was seventeen thousand dollar, seventeen thousand people, sorry, less than we thought existed. And I do have Tim Shields here, who's going to talk about some data and be able to answer some questions on that. But what we understood, the reason why we said at least seventeen thousand were undercounted, because if we looked at the water bills and what, who was enrolled in the schools and things like that, it did not show that we had that dip. If those water bills were still being paid, you know, we believed that there were people in those properties. The city requested right away, once we got our numbers, a special census, but that process took quite a long time. We did receive a special census date in March of 2025. The team that was gathered, including Joan Cameron, a former Census, Federal Census Bureau had run many special censuses in many municipalities, joined the team. We had a Harvard Fellow, we had several interns, our Community Engagement Department, our G.I.A.S. Department, all of those were involved in this. They started recruiting, because as you may know, the, all of the hiring has to go through the federal government, but we have to, we are responsible as a municipality to go through the hiring for those, recruitment. So we started events, but in the middle of those events, the, we had a change in federal leadership with President Trump being inaugurated, and there was a hiring freeze at the federal level. So actually, as we were in the middle of a recruitment event, people suddenly could no longer use the applications and couldn't access them. Through that process, we had done one successful hiring event, I believe, it was just one at that point. We had 22 people at that time that met the requirements for hiring. We still have those names and information and could access, but from February to now, their lives could have changed, and this is, of course, a seasonal temporary position, so we would have to go check back in with them. But since it was put on hold, really, the city was just waiting to hear from the Census Bureau, and that's when we heard on May 16. We heard from them, May 25, we were able to have a meeting and start talking to them about this. So I'll tell you what they shared with us. So the, there's still the hiring freeze at the federal government, but the Census Bureau received a temporary hiring waiver allowing people to be hired through December 31 of 2025, not beyond that. As a result, we're scheduled for August 1 as our special census date. And the online portion of the special census, which is a survey, is scheduled for July 1. This gives us less than a month to get information into our community about the importance of the census, what it means as far as funding from the state, and that it is safe to do so. We have new barriers since 2020, and we'll talk about those in a minute. What is a little different in the special census is that they will get four mailings to their house from the federal government with a special code. That code corresponds to that household in which to track themselves, they have to use that code. And then that code no longer becomes active, starting on August 1, and the only way to report is by opening up your door and talking to a census worker, a federal census worker. So, Tim, would you mind stepping up to this mic? And just in case, this is, I'm just going to allow him to describe what the special census map is, and just give us a little background information on why we had to create it the way we did.
Sure, so, Tim Shields, the G.I.S. Manager for the city. So what you're seeing is what we had designed as our ideal map for the special census operation. How it was developed was to account for all of the census tracts that saw the large population loss in the 2020 decennial, in addition to all of the new construction areas that we have in the city in the west side, the far east side, the southeast side part of town. And then, per the census requirements, everything has to be contiguous to one another, which is why you see like some spaghetti strings going out from the center part of the city out to the new development areas that we have. And because of their contiguous requirement, you also have to start from one census tract that's wholly within your jurisdiction, which is what's highlighted in yellow on the map on the right. So any special census operation that we conduct has to start from one of those yellow geographies. And just to give a sense of geography, so a census block is the smallest geography, which is generally tens of households, and you'll go up to a census block group, which will be hundreds, and then a tract, which would be thousands. So in this map, we were accounting for approximately a third of the city being part of the special census.
Thank you, Tim. So we have our, we have an approved map, we cannot change that map if we want to stay in this timeframe for our special census tract. It's quite a process to get that approved, and we have been approved for that. Some concerns that we have is that we have less than a month to build community awareness and public trust regarding the census. The city currently only has one full-time person in community engagement right now, and they were instrumental in working on the special census prior to, with the other date. We also do not have several of those other people that were here just with, for, that were working on it before, or, for example, our Harvard Fellows no longer with us. Joan Cameron is still contracted with us and will be a great resource, but the rest, we do not. And the fact is, just to be honest with you, we're in the middle of a transition and learning things all the time, and still trying to get up to speed on everything to do with the city. So you know, like I said, Joan Cameron is still available for utilization, I have been in contact with her and she's been great. It's just, you know, we would have to hire 53 people for the special census, and they have to be fully vetted. The application process for them to come, we would, we had them at the library, in the computer labs. It takes 45 minutes to an hour, and closer to an hour is what I've heard from city staff, to complete the federal application. They also have to have a resume that they can upload. They have to go through all of the federal vetting, then be hired and trained, and then put out in our community by the, around the August 1 date. That, like I said, we had 22 people that met that, but that was after months of getting the word out there about recruitment and about the need for having this. Of course, we want people that are from the communities in which we're counting, because they're going to feel safer opening the doors to those, to their neighbors, right? We want people that have roots in Aurora, it's going to help establish trust and comfort. Also, like I said, there's some internal staffing gaps. We have, we had more access to certain resources than we do now. We had a, we, part of our agreement and contract with the Federal Census Bureau is having an office for them, phones, things. I did spoke to, I spoke to our IT department, and they had just torn all that out, so they'd need to go back and redo all of that. That's actually a smaller issue, I would think. But the community barriers, so that's our internal barriers, some other community barriers. To be honest, the federal, you know, political environment has made this very difficult. We have had ICE sightings in our community as recently as today, we've had people be detained in our community as recent as last Friday. This is a real fear, and community organizations that work especially with our Latina Hispanic community has been telling people not to open their doors to anyone and not speak to the federal government at all, to protect themselves or family members. And that is going to be, and we have reached out, several of us have reached out to churches, to community organizations that work within this community, and they have advised us to not go forward, that we will not be successful, due to how hard they've worked to inform people not to open up their doors. There is certainly language access issues and barriers. There are some people in our community that certainly are bilingual, some only speak one language. Often, we would work with the schools to help make sure that the kids know the importance of the census. If they are, they may be the literate one in the household and can help, it is in Spanish and in English that it's sent out. But depending on someone's educational level, when they came to this country, they may or may not be fully literate in either language. So we usually, we had a big plan to work with schools, well, school's out for the summer, doesn't mean we still can't partner with schools if we were to go into it, but that's one of them. We don't really, we can't access that partnership until school's back in session in a real full way, although we could start planning. We also have apartment buildings in this new census tract, and they're more difficult to get into and then get people to answer their doors. It's just trickier if there's lock codes, things like that, it just is a hurdle. There is the risk that we could have a count decrease if we're not able to access what we can in order, and that would mean that we would lose additional funding. So whatever the count is at the end of this, is our certified count, we won't get it for a year, until a year after. So if we were to finish our count, we have three months to do it, we wouldn't be looking at that. They're telling me December of 2026 is likely when we would get our count back, if we were to complete it. The other issue is that we, December 31 is a firm deadline. Whether we're counted fully or not, they will pull the employees, and the count is where it is at. So, one thing, our, around approximately $250 per person is what the count is worth to our community. We would have to, to try to get not just who we counted in the special census, but at least, you know, around 1,100 people counted beyond that in order to break even with our sunk costs, our million dollars there, and then our city's costs on this as well. And that doesn't include the kind of getting that money back, okay? So through all of this, we have some things that we have immediate, our communications team has prepared things that are ready to go. We have things in the hopper to like, for example, contracts to Univision and, and things like that to roll out ads. We have stuff that we just have to kind of get, it takes about two weeks to sometimes get into the ad cycle. We have those things ready to go, our communications team has already done that. What we don't have, I think so, I think, is the other stuff that is in the community has been going for months, trying to work on those relationships and ease people's fears about this, and get people to respond, which is going to be, of course, absolutely paramount. We would need to really work on the recruitment effort as well, but there are some local applicants that might be able to work on it. So here are our options, these are the choices that we have to make, and we have to make this decision ASAP. They gave us one week to make the decision, and we had the meeting on the 25th, so we have to give them an answer by tomorrow. And we have lots of time. So we could proceed, go with the August 1 date, hit the ground running, starting tomorrow in a big way, try to get things sorted away for recruitment efforts, and hope for the best. There's the risk of the undercount, there's a risk that we won't get enough people hired in time, there's a risk we won't finish before the hiring freeze is done. So that's option one. Option two is delayed start, and this is a little, I've asked this question of the Census Bureau, when we first were on the phone with them, they said we might be able to do August 15 or the 31st, but then they walked that back in the conversation, never mind, you really should probably start the 1st. So I have asked this question, I have not heard back from them yet, whether that is actually a possibility. The other thing is, is there are several municipalities that were supposed to do a special census, we are first, we're number one on the list to start ours. Other people may decide not to do it, there is a possibility we could fill in and plug in their hole if they give up their date. However, we still have the challenge of getting done by December 31.
Let me interrupt real quick.
Yeah.
And there's one of 17, right? We're, there's 17 people currently waiting in line, we're at the front of the line currently.
Correct. So one, one advantage to that is we could see the challenges other municipalities have and try to answer those issues as we go. But it depends on what kind of communication we'd have with them, but we would try to enter into that communication. Option three is a request to re-enter the queue. This means that we would forego this special census date completely and ask to re-enter the queue. The risks to that is we don't know if the hiring freeze will begin again on January 1. That's what they're telling us they will, but they don't, they can't talk about any projection in the future at all. They are not allowed to talk about that, I'm hoping that they would continue on and let us do a special census, but this is with a new map. And the new map mitigates some risk for us as well. We would focus this map on specifically new development, although we would have to start in downtown, because it has to be a fully, an area in which is all in Aurora, not Aurora Township, for example, and then track it, continue continuously to a lot of our new developments. This might help us demographically, get certain people counted that are at less risk. And, for example, in portions of the current special census tract, we have up to 90% of some of those, demographically, are Hispanic families. So there's more likelihood they're affected, but not necessarily by kind of the, the things like ICE, et cetera. like ICE, et cetera. The other, the fourth option is withdrawing from the special census altogether, ask for our money back. They, federal government has spent less than $100,000 on it currently. Get that money back, which we can be refunded, and say, this is not it. That is, that is the other option. I think that there loses opportunity, obviously, for us to do the count and in turn, the yearly revenue. And remember, it's not just through 3030, I mean, 2030, not that far, through 2031, because we won't get our certified count for a year later after our next 10-year census. So here are some of considerations that we've been throwing around, that we're trying to ask ourselves. Are we positioned effectively and equitably to implement this count? Can we ensure that hard-to-count populations will be included? Are we willing to accept the risk of a lower certified population? And is it fiscally responsible to proceed, given the city's current staffing and capacity? In meetings with staff, we have pretty much said no to many of these questions. We can make it happen, but there, there are great risks to that. So our recommendation is to go back to option three, to re-enter the queue, and to redraw and resubmit a map for approval with the hope that they will open up again, but there is no guarantee. And so there, there is risk involved in this. I'm going to let Tim just talk a little bit more about what that new map might look like.
Yeah, so, so for that new map focusing really on, on new development, we've had since 2019 approximately 2,250 building permits issued here at the city, and then those building permits that are in various stages of, of development, whether you're looking at a community like Del Webb, or, you know, all, all the development that we're having out at the Fox Valley Mall. So as the buildings are being built and being occupied, more and more new residents are, are coming into Aurora. So while we would have to potentially, you know, wait and be delayed into next year, that just allows more time for those developments to become fully occupied and allow us a greater number of, of new residents to Aurora to be included in that count. It would allow us also to, you know, mitigate those barriers that we had discussed earlier when we were really focusing on, you know, the entirety of the census tracts where we saw the population loss of 17,000. We'd still have to start from at least one of those, so we'd still have an opportunity to make some data-driven decisions on where we think we'd want to start from and still, you know, address some of the hard-to-count areas. But we wouldn't have to necessarily count all of the hard-to-count areas with all of the new barriers that we have had happen to us since we initially started this operation.
And so we call this a new construction focus recount, right? So, and how many, I think it was 2,300, correct me if I'm wrong?
Yeah.
Potential new housing units that we might get should we resubmit a new map?
Correct, yeah. Since, since 2019, we've issued approximately 2,250 building permits through May of, of 2025.
So I just want to open it up, is, are we done?
Yep, that's it.
The presentation, open it up to the council for any questions and your thoughts. You have, you know, we looked at, boiled it down to our options. It's not, it's not a great opportunity. It certainly comes with high risk, but I want to hear what the rest of the council has to say, and if you have any other questions for, for us as we go back to the Census Bureau tomorrow.
I have a question.
Alderman Franco?
So, when you talk about other municipalities, 17, is this state of Illinois municipalities?
Um, I don't, no, I think it's nationally.
So do we know if any of them, so we're number one up, everybody in the nation? All right, well then that takes away my question, because I wanted to know what they were doing. So I didn't know it was Illinois. If we were to go with option three, what happens to the $900,000? Is it still out there?
It still stays with the federal government until we use it, yep.
Okay. So, you know, I, I look at this because this is a, we know this is a problem nationally.
Yes.
We just know it, we could talk about it all day long. That's not going to go away for three and a half more years. But one, but we have to think about the census again, the next time around. What are we going to do about that? So I think when we decide what we're going to do, I think we think short-term, we need to think long-term. Because we don't want to have this thing, you know, 2030, have to deal with this again. So whatever we could fix now to go into that, so we don't lose more money, I think that has to be part of the conversation. I don't know how it fits into this, but I think that's part of it, because you're right, we didn't lose 17,000 people. And this new census tracting would be good, but we have to think, all right, if we're going to lose our 4.3 million a year, it's bad for us, but 2030, we don't want to lose anymore. So I, I just don't know where we go with that. I just wanted to, but I want us to think about that long-term too, however that equates into this.
No, thank you, Alderman Franco. I think that's a great point, that one thing that is nice about the special census is that we're going to learn a lot from doing it and hopefully keep those connections going into 2030 when we have to do even the bigger ground game again. And we don't, we want to establish those relationships and keep those strong throughout that time. And I think that is an advantage at least.
One other thing we did for assessment was Karina Swires Darden and Casey Cuevas did call through a lot of the leaders, faith-based leaders, to try and get some sort of assessment, and it all came back negative.
Yeah.
Alderman Smith?
Yes, I have a couple of, like I said, practical questions if we decide to move forward on the census. Do we know based on the recent census, where the gaps in the count came? Did they come from owner-occupied? Did they come from rental properties?
Well, I, I'll, I'll let Tim answer that, but I do know nationally where we saw the biggest decrease was amongst rental properties where, and our, and that's where we deeply felt it, but you can be more specific than me.
Yeah, so the, the largest portion that you saw, if we could pull the map back up to help us discuss. So basically, everything around the, the yellow boundary on the map going out to where you see like the very, I'll say, defined line to the east of that, those are the census tracts where we saw the largest population loss. And it was a combination of rental units and also minority population, which was identified by the Census Bureau at a national and state level that there was an undercount. The state of Illinois, I forget what year it was, they had challenged and they were successful in changing the numbers through their initiative with the federal government because they did acknowledge that there wasn't undercount specifically with those types of communities.
Well, the reason why I ask that question is we may have an advantage that other communities don't, which is we have an apartment licensing program in the city of Aurora, where in theory we have 100% rentals in the city of Aurora that's supposed to be licensed. So that means we know who the owners are, and that means we can contact the owners and ask, does anybody live in your units? And get that information to start so we can continue to contact the people that are inside their units. That is an advantage that other communities don't have.
Yeah, Alderman Smith, I think that we can do that for that online survey portion of that and use that. Once August 1st, we have to be hands-off as far as anyone knocking on the doors is all those federal employees and only them. But yes, initially, we can be. The only other thing that I forgot to mention before is it's not just about opening the doors. There's a lot of the population that does not feel comfortable giving over their data to the federal government right now.
I understand.
And, and so the, even the online portion, we're going to have some struggles with. In speaking to some of these community partners, I think the biggest thing is recently the IRS allowed for their information to be given to ICE, and that, it was something that was brought up in our conversations.
Right, no, I understand that, but I'm, what I'm suggesting is we do have an advantage that we could use.
Yeah.
That other communities don't, to increase the odds, so to speak, and get a better count.
No, I think that's a great idea. Thank you.
And can I, one more thing, the reason why I asked that, two parts, if it was a owner or rental issue, is we have water bills. We could tell if there's people living in the owner-occupied units. There's means for us to tell as well.
And that's how we, that's how we knew that the count was not correct, was because of those water bills. But the water bills, we can't send that information to the federal government, and that's enough. They have to be willing to fill out the survey on the count, yeah.
We know that.
Yeah, we do. We know we've been undercounted, yeah.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes, a couple of clarifications, Shannon. You brought up about the risk of having an undercount, a further undercount.
Yeah.
It was my understanding when we started down this endeavor that we would only be trying to count the high-density areas that we knew we had missed. And as we all know up here, we had to go through a whole new remapping because of it. So we know where that population loss is, majority of it, not all of it. So, in doing this, are we just trying to recoup those who haven't done it? Or are you suggesting we have to do the whole thing over again? Because you said you risk having a lower count yet.
There is the possibility of that. We really don't know until we're out there, right? But there's a risk there could be an undercount due to just people not being willing to fill out the information online or, or open their doors to our, the federal employees.
No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Shannon, I mean, interrupt, but I think I didn't, I didn't ask the question appropriately. The only way we could get a further undercount is if we started all over again.
Well, so, there were people within that district that did fill out the census. We may lose some of those people in this count, and whatever count we end with here is our certified number.
So the answer, the answer to your question is, we have to recount everybody that was already counted and then count the people who were not counted.
So we have to, we have to recount the entire city?
Is that accurate?
In the entire census tract.
In the entire census tract.
And some of those people were counted, some were not.
Yes, okay. And what about those folks? Because I know some people have, have gone back, I've seen social media from people my ward saying, hey, why am I getting this new census thing? It's because you didn't fill it out. And they had proceeded and filled it out. What's happened to those census that have occurred already?
The, corresponding to 2020 or corresponding to when it was sent out in, you know, February?
Corresponding to 2020, whatever has been done prior to this point, there had been things sent out to residents, and they've questioned, why am I getting this? And someone said, you're getting it because you never filled it out. And she felt, she said, I filled it out. So I, I'm just trying to...
Do you want to take that one?
Yeah, so the special census is a completely independent operation of the decennial census altogether. One of the other challenges that we have is the Census Bureau is conducting many census operations in addition to a special census if we were to go through with one. So they could have gotten a mailing to submit to like the American Community Survey, or there's like some workforce development ones. The census is always collecting data. So they might have been requested to submit one of those surveys. The special census operation that we were going to go forward with for the March 15th date was never sent out. So if they did see some confusion with all of the census operations, that's probably in line with it. And if you submitted for the 2020 census, you still need to submit for the 2025 special census as well, because it's a completely independent operation.
Thank you, answered all my questions. And the last thing is, if we go through, go to this, go through this and our count is higher, does the money come back retroactive from 2020?
No, unfortunately. I did ask that question, Alderman Franco had that question, I believe, before, and unfortunately, no, it does not. It is from whenever the count is certified, which would be a year after we end the special census count, roughly.
Thank you.
Alderman Nunes?
Did the Bureau mention anything about the sizes of the other communities, or specifically what communities are also on that list?
They did not divulge that, unfortunately. I will say, the, nationally, the undercount was around communities our size, so it's probably similar-sized municipalities. They did not tell us, they just told us that we were the first meeting they had and were first on the list. So that's, that's all the information they gave. I'm hoping they would be willing to divulge that later if we were to, so we could have some, you know, teamwork and get some more information from them.
Some best practices from similar-sized communities that...
Absolutely.
Alderman White?
So, I do have a question about capacity. From my understanding with the traditional census, there are federal workers whose full-time job is to prepare and get ready to deploy the census every 10 years. Will there be any federal support for the special census, or is it solely on the city to deploy in this special census?
So, the, to answer your question, we have the regional office that's located in Chicago. There are two employees there that can support us, as well as some federal employees, just in answering questions mostly, and they can help us. They have to list the job for, on USAjobs.gov. It has to be listed there. When we had did, when we did it back in February for the recruiting events, it actually took several months for them to list that job. I asked that specific question in the meeting, knowing that information from staff, and I said, oh, we can do it in a few days. I don't know whether, you know, I hope I can trust that, but it did take quite a long time. We have to recruit here locally 53 people that will then become federal government workers. They will bring a person in to train those workers and to set them up in an office in city-owned property to run that whole program. So, but we have to recruit locally and we have to get the people to apply and to get hired. So that burden is on the city, but once they are hired, then that training and getting them ready and getting them out there is on the federal government, and that's partially why we paid the million dollars in order to pay people out to kind of do that work.
And so, I was just going to ask you to highlight that, because the experience you had is when we had staff preparing for this, and we were only able to hit 22 people and we need 53, so maybe if you could talk to what that looked like?
Yeah, so, so the Census Bureau recommends, you're really targeting to recruit about 250 people to attrition down to the 53 that you need to conduct a successful operation. One of the other challenges that we have with the hiring freeze in this particular time period is who we hire is who we hire. There is no ability to add additional staff to this operation because of that hiring freeze. So in a, in a traditional special census without those barriers, you know, you can pull from other communities that are doing specials. If theirs are winding down, you might be able to, you know, get some staff from another operation. But with this particular operation, this timeline, we have no ability to, to pull in reinforcements, if you will.
Alderman Smith?
And these 53 hypothetical people, are they being employed through the federal government and, and by them?
Correct.
So we can assist and hire more people to help out as assistants?
No, we can...
They have to be federal employees?
We can assist initially when we're trying to get people to fill out the online survey. We can, we can go as a city, but we have a month to do that, a little bit over a month because, to convince them to, but we really, that month of July is really important because if we want to do that, we would have people knocking on doors, just asking them to do it. And did they get their mailer? And do they have to have their specific code? So it is a little tricky, but we can do it then, but once the August 1st happens, we have to back off and we cannot have anybody sent to the doors at that point.
Yeah, I would suggest whatever we can do up until that point, even if we have to expend a little bit more money, losing 4.3 million dollars is a lot of revenue every year, and be well worth the investment to, to increase the chances of our success if we move forward.
Anybody else?
Mr. Mayor Lash?
Alderman, Alderman Burrow?
I, I agree with the option, option three, to re-enter the queue and get a new date. My only question about that is, can we, can we hire in the future? That seems to be the big question mark. But, but it seems to me that during the city of Aurora's growth years, we had a couple, you know, a couple of special censuses in a, in a decade, you know, in the, in the 90s and 2000s. So this, this is not, not a hard thing to, for us to do, especially targeting new construction. So I would say we need to move forward with that. Unfortunately, not, not having that answer to, can we hire at a later date, that, that seems to be the big question.
There's a lot of unpredictable pieces, especially with the federal government.
The federal government controls the application, so until they put it out there, it does not, there's nothing we can do, and they won't release it until after we have the special census date.
Mr. Mayor?
Alderman Buck?
Thank you. Shannon, you started to touch a little bit on the 17 municipalities, and you said it's for the country. Okay, we're certain of that?
I'm not certain, but I believe that that's what they were saying in that meeting. I couldn't, I can double-check and ask if it's for the state, because it could be.
No, okay.
Yeah.
At least...
I'm not certain.
My experience with them, it's for the, everything is just broke down by regional census office, and that's not on state lines. And even when we did our original 2020, they changed the states that were in our regional census office, so I don't remember exactly, but it's kind of Midwest-ish. It was. So possibly we're one of 17 out of our regional census office, possibly. That's the way it used to be. I don't, you know, the whole world's changed since then.
It is certainly possible. This recall was with the federal office and the regional office was there, so I don't know if...
And when we were going under the, the original special census initiative, we were informed that we were like with Iowa was one of the regional states that was with us. that we were like, with Iowa was one of the regional states that was with us. I don't recall any other ones. I just recall, when we were trying to get the date, we were competing with a lot of communities in Iowa to get that March date that we were looking for. So I do believe it is like, Midwest region, as you were stating, but they did not share any of the information as to what states or other communities were in that queue with us at this time.
Okay, thank you. So, I mean, my take on this is, and I'm glad we looked at it at a new map, including mainly the new construction. It would definitely be a challenge to go into those neighborhoods where we know we're going to have challenges. For that to be our focus, I think would be foolish. We would just be beating our heads against the wall. So, I mean, the whole thing is a gamble. But I would definitely be in favor of holding for a new map that is centered on our new construction. That'll also give us time to mention, a lot of our new construction is in phases. So, I met with Del Webb this week, and Pulte, and they're going full force, but, you know, they got to put the people in the houses. They can only build them so fast. So, but they're building quickly, and I think that time is going to bring a higher number. So, that's my take of it, at least.
Anybody else? Alderman, Messy Akos?
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Cameron, what a challenge to have coming in. I commend you here, answering all these questions and providing clarity and transparency. My initial question to your first slide, in regards to $4.3 million, when it first came to us and made us aware that we were low on the count, the dollar value was 3.6. Was there a smaller dollar value attributed per person, per resident, in the count before? What happened there in terms of now being $4.3 million? Because that's a $700,000 swing.
Mr. Minnick? I have his numbers here, but I think he would probably do a better job at explaining that.
Good deal. So, yeah. Chris Minnick, Chief Financial Officer, sorry. The 4.7 million is predicated on, I'm sorry, 4.3 million, I'm looking at a different number. $4.3 million is predicated on approximately $250 per resident. I don't have the math here handy, but it's possible that the 3.6 referred only to the general fund loss, which would be, there are two components that are actually being affected by the down, or by the undercount. Number one is the general fund. The general fund revenues are approximately $197 per capita, and the second revenue stream that's being impacted by the undercount is the motor fuel tax. Motor fuel tax is also based on consumption, but those dollars are limited to only roadway and roadway types of construction, roadway improvement types of issues, road maintenance, et cetera. And those need to be expended on those purposes and approved by the state. So, I believe that 4.3 million has been pretty consistent. The number does fluctuate a little bit, depending on the state, the actual state revenue collections for each of those revenue streams. But 250 would have been, should have been consistent pretty much for all of them, or for that entire period. So, I apologize, I don't have the breakdown on the totals, but...
It's not a fixed number?
No.
Okay, it's still an approximation, 3.6 is an approximation, 4.3 is another approximation?
Yes, but I believe the 3.6 only referred to the general fund portion.
Okay, so that's a minimal 3.6?
Correct.
Okay, all right. I have just one more comment here, maybe, with Ms. Cameron. Ms. Cameron, like my colleagues that have spoken up here already, it seems like option three is the way to go. My concern would be, when I heard you speak about the IT tear-out of a communication center, why would we tear it out, knowing that we're ramping up for a recount?
I mean, I would have...
And what is, what's really torn out? What happened there?
I think it was just, they collected all the stuff that was sitting there, and instead of, and probably was going to put it towards other things that people needed in the city. I don't think it was, we hadn't gotten the date, and perhaps they needed some of those items, and were going to connect them to new staff. I'm not sure, but I can ask.
Okay.
And I can add to that, from the IT perspective. So, the field office, we had, per the census requirements, outfitted it with computers, monitors, tables, chairs. Printers were a big one for them. They really wanted very specific printers for that operation. The direction to remove the property from there was because the census had frozen us, and so we made the decision to remove the equipment when the census was frozen. And then, it just so happens, you know, a week after we removed the equipment, then the Census Bureau comes back and says, hey, we got a new date for you. So it was just one of those serendipitous things, where, you know, based on the information that we had, the census was paused, we're not trying to have that equipment just sitting around in a building. And then the census came back, just, you know, a week afterwards, to say, hey, you know, there's potentially a new date on the table for you.
Okay. And I think you said it would take about two days to put it back up. Is that...
Yeah, our service desk would be able to put the equipment back in there in a timely fashion.
And to be honest, it's probably the least of my concerns, as far as this goes. You know, I think they can be, we'll be able to get that up and going in no time for them, you know, before they're here. We've still got to recruit them.
All right. Well, the key is, when we do, we do, and it looks like we're going with option three, we have the confidence of the community that we're going to move forward with all hands on deck, all our ducks in a row, all our Ts crossed, and all our Is dotted this time. Obviously, something didn't go properly correct the first time in the census, and we got to make sure we do this right, because now we're putting money into it. So, but no, thank you so much. Appreciate the report.
Thank you, Alderman.
So, do we want to get some level of consensus? I hear some over here saying they prefer a different option. If you prefer something other than option three, then go ahead and weigh in. But I want to make sure everybody has a chance to voice their opinion on this. This is definitely the, not an easy decision to make, with so much uncertainty between what's happening at the federal government and what's happening at the doors in Aurora. But, other woman Smith, did you have more?
I don't think we came to any consensus of option three. I think only two Aldermen spoke to that, so I don't think that we have decided upon that. I'm with Alderman Seville. This is a lot of money to let go and not try to fight for. I understand our restraints, but I do think it's something that we have a duty to our residents, to try to get this done. So I would, you know, go with one or two. But, you know, I'm just one of 12 people.
Alderman Smith?
I would concur with that, under one condition, though. If we move forward with all deliberate speed, that somehow we support our endeavor. If that means either hiring extra people to help out, or asking our city employees if they want overtime to help out, I would say, whatever expenditure that we can do, and we succeed, then it's going to pay for itself. So I think it's worth the effort, if we can double down from our side, and assist in the whole process, to meet the shortened time period, because it is a gamble. If we don't, we just can't let things unfold. We have to help and control the outcome, so.
So to answer that question, myself and Tony Martinez are talking to somebody very strong with door-to-door, door-to-door training, to bring into the communications department any way to promote some of the other city programs that we have. And, you know, should we be successful in recruiting this person? I think we could probably move quickly, but that would be, that would require council approval for them as well. But I think we could probably find people, but I don't think that having the right people necessarily negates the realistic barrier that might exist with people's fear of giving information to the other federal government, but...
Mayor, if I may, just, I agree, I think we all want to get this money in the city coffers ASAP. My only concern is, if we are hiring even locally, that's going to take a couple weeks, and then that pushes us, you know. It's just, the timeline is this, really, and so that's our only concern here, is the timeline mixed with these community barriers right now. But we would absolutely, if we go forward, we need your help, and we will be asking for it within your words, too. And I appreciate both of your sentiments, because I do believe that this is something we need to hopefully give back to the community, but I want to set us up for success and not failure.
Alderman Nunez?
Just to clarify, so, if we were to move forward, the count is submitted by December 31st of this year. They then review it for the next 12 months, so we wouldn't see any fund changes until '27?
We would get the certified count in possibly December of '26.
'26.
And then, I'm not sure when the state dispersment is. Mr. Minnick, do you know that?
And I've got to follow up after that.
Yeah.
Yes, Chris Minnick, again. Yes, it usually takes about a month or two, after the dispersment of the, or, excuse me, after the certification of the count down to the state. State has to process it, and it usually takes a month or two. It's fairly quick, once the number's received, but it's not instantaneous.
So, between now and then, we're gambling $13 million, right, at a $4.3 million a year estimate?
For the years, '27 to '31, essentially, is what it would be, yes.
And then, if we undercount, let's say we're at $17,000 the last time, and even if we, if that number goes up even 50%, just hypothetical, we're now gambling to lose $22 million, roughly, or within that range?
I can answer that a little bit. Actually, we'd have to, what the count is, we'd have to be under what our count was last time.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So if people that were counted last time suddenly don't answer their doors, or don't do their surveys, that's where we're at risk. Yeah.
Can I make a point? I just want to make sure everybody understands this.
Alderman Franco?
So, we don't have to find $17,000. We just got to make sure that we get $1 million worth of people to break even. So you don't have to have 17. If you got 10, it's 2.5 million, so that would be okay. So we don't have to get up to that. I just want to make sure everybody knows, $17,000 at the magic mark, below that still works for us, too. I don't know if everybody...
Yeah, anything above our original count is $250 more, right? So we have, I think the concern is, is there more hesitation now, even more than in 2020? And will we even be able to count? And there will be confusion, some confusion of, why am I receiving these four things in the mail? And we're going to have to really, really work hard on a huge campaign of messaging, of being out in the community. And, you know, we have a lot of hurdles there, but, you know, no matter when we do that, we're going to have that. But we, right now, we also have a very short timeframe. But yes, anything above what we counted last time is gravy for us and good, but we have to be able to get there.
Did you have an opinion on option one, option...
Well, you know...
It's a tough call.
It is. I would go option three, because I think, not only do we need to try this, we got to set ourselves up for 2030. And I think if we get that ball rolling now, it'll be fresh in their minds. Because every 10 years, you kind of forget, but three or four years beforehand, they might be ready to go again, because we're almost doing a trial run. So I think that could benefit us long-term, maybe not so much short-term. I think going forward, we could find, it'll work for us. So I would definitely go that way, just to give us a shot.
Alderman Nunez, I saw you nodding your head. I add your name to that list.
Mr. Mayor, for clarification, just on the options for consideration, so we're all crystal clear on the same page. Option three has the new map with the new construction. Option two does not.
There is some new construction in that map, but it's not, we would do more of a focus.
Oh, yeah, it is not the focus.
Yeah.
So, option two is basically with the map that we have. We just delayed it a little bit. Option three is with a new focused map.
Correct. And option two, we think is highly unlikely. We're just praying that maybe we could get a few more days, but...
And just for clarity, so option three, you know, we would retool and remove some of the census areas, you know, like in the central part of downtown, like in, you know, 1, 2, 7, 3, and 4, where we had those barriers. So we would try to mitigate the risk in those communities by not having so much within a new special census map. Whereas in this original proposal here, it is everything to be all-encompassing.
Did you prefer three or two?
Definitely three.
Three. Alderman Penwellis, three? Other woman Bade? Alderman Larson?
Three.
Alderman Garza? Okay, so here's what we are going to do. We can go back to, we're going to go back to the Census Bureau tomorrow. I think the first thing we'll do is ask for a delay. If we can get a reasonable delay that allows us to build up, then we'll probably communicate through the Alderman's office about that. And then, if, other than that, we'll have you draw up a new map, and then go back and re-enter it, and come back with a timeline, and trying to communicate with the rest of the council what that timeline looks like.
Okay. Yeah, we'll keep you updated. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to have a long night, I can tell now. Presentation on the planned water rate adjustments for July 2025, 2026. This is an agenda item that is going to be coming to the Finance Committee, but wanted to give people a clear picture, the whole council, of what we're looking to do, as we also have questions about federal funding, as they support our lead water line replacement, and some of the changes at the federal level that are happening there, so.
Good afternoon. Jason Bower with the Department of Public Works. I also have, well, Chris Minnick is here, and Bob Liebly is also here, in case there's any questions that I can't answer. But we were talking about water rates. We update the, per the ordinance, we update water rates every July 1st, and we usually come to council, and we recommend doing that in two-year increments. We had that initial conversation with the mayor's office, and he thought it was a good time, certainly with a lot of the new members on the council. And we really haven't done a presentation on water rates at this level. Usually, we go through Finance, and by the time it comes here, a lot of things have already been decided, so he wanted all of you to be in on that decision. So, he asked that we put a brief presentation together as to where we're at, and what we're looking to do. So, really quickly here, as we get into what the water rates cover, thought maybe this would be a good time to go over what goes on at the treatment plant. So we've got a brief video here from Bob Liebly.
My name is Bob Liebly, the superintendent of the Water Production Division for the City of Aurora, Illinois, and we are in the city's one and only central drinking water treatment plant. This facility has been in service since 1992. It is the sole source of treatment and distribution and production of drinking water for all of the City of Aurora. We utilize multiple sources of water. Most people are familiar that we use the Fox River as the primary source, and then we also have a network of wells. From an aesthetic perspective, which would be taste, odor, appearance, Aurora is generally perceived to have high-quality water. There's always some kind of a taste test competition that goes on. We've been participating in those events for many years. Starts at the Kane County level, but they also have an annual water taste test. And we've been lucky enough, or fortunate enough, to win that many times. And if you win that, then you qualify to compete at the state level. The Illinois section of the American Waterworks Association, they host an annual taste test. We've won that several times, too. We are a partnership for safe water plant. It's something that you earn through the National American Waterworks Association, and it has to do with plant performance. More important than winning a taste test, but it's a process where we went through, and we did analysis, and reviewed the performance of the plant. We've earned a couple of distinctions by doing that. We maintain that through consistent performance. After a while, though, you start to get the feel of how important that responsibility and that job is. You're treating all this water and sending it out to this large population, and knowing that it has to be safe. I don't think there's any greater satisfaction or gratification than to do that. We have a great facility, that it was designed to do a job and to perform at a high level. It continues to do that 32 years later, and then we have a fantastic staff. We are the water... years later, and then we have a fantastic staff, we are the water utility for the City of Aurora, people may take that for granted, which they should, I want everybody to know that there's a lot that goes on behind the scenes at the treatment plant with our professional staff, that's what makes things tick, as we like to say, we keep the water flowing.
All right, so there you go, just a brief overview of what happens at the water treatment plant.
Hi, my name is Bob.
So, in addition to the plant, basically, we've got various costs that cover, that are covered by the water rate, it's not just the plant, obviously that's the biggest cost, the electricity, the chemicals, all the maintenance that we have to do at the plant and the supplies, the staffing, it's not just water production, but we've also got water billing, we have IT services, water and sewer maintenance, they actually take care of the distribution system and the water rates cover all of that as well, and then engineering as the support staff working on the various projects to do the system maintenance and upgrades, the treatment plant projects are taken care of at the treatment plant, but all the pump houses, well, they take care of the storage facilities too, but the pump houses, the distribution system and the collection system, all that's taken care of by engineering and water and sewer, we also have repayments of previous loans that we have to pay back as part of the water rates, we've also, over the years, we've been slowly ramping up for the lead service line replacements that we do, and we don't have any tax revenues that support the utility, so it's, it's basically the way we design the water rates is that the water rates that we're paying support everything that goes along with providing the water. So what do we do when we look at adjusting the rates? Well, we try and, first, we try to make sure that it's reasonable and that the impacts aren't large and that we keep things fair and equitable, and we've got to keep up with regulatory changes, I already mentioned the lead service lines, that, you know, we need to make sure that as the water utility, the communal water supply, we're the ones tasked with replacing all those private lead service lines in the city, so that goes into the water rates, and then we have to maintain a fund balance, there are certain thresholds we have to stay above in our balance, and we're, we've always well exceeded that, but that all is taken into account when we adjust the rates. So the water budget is just shy of $60 million, and that includes $5.5 million each year starting next year, this year, I think in 2025, we're budgeted for $4 million, and then next year, we're going to be at that 5.5 million, and that will cover everything we need to do to comply with state, all the state legislature that was passed, I think, 20, end of 2021, so we've been gearing up for it, and again, by not coming forward with a $5 million change all at one time, we've able to keep the increases moderate so that it's not impactful to the, to the users. So as a part of that 58 million, our cost of service is 49 and a half million, so that's basically what we try to gather with just the water rates, we do have other sources of revenue, the fund balance, it gets interest, we do have new permit fees, so when someone connects to the system, there's fees associated with that, so we're not trying to cover those, they're offsetting costs there, our anticipated revenue for 2025, if we did no change to the water rate, we're shy by about 2.8 million, and that's us forecasting what different chemicals are going to cost, as you know, we, we have quite a few staff that are involved, so every time that there's a staff increase in pay, COLA every January, all those things, we're projecting out that we're going to be shy by about 2.8 million, and that's pretty normal for us, that's what we try to stay ahead of, and that's where, again, we look at incremental changes instead of just all of a sudden getting a bill and it's 20, 30% higher. So, we looked at three different rate structures, historically, we've been anywhere from 2% to 6.5%, so we looked at 4%, 5%, and 6%, and as you can see there, those would be what the new rates are, so the residential rate for, so we've got residential and non-residential, non-residential isn't non-residents of the city because we do provide water to non-residents, that's the industrial and commercial users, and then the sewer fee will go up moderately too, the sewer fee that takes care of the storm sewers, that's on the water bill. So at the, at the 4%, 5%, and 6%, we already noted that at 0%, we're going to be running in a deficit, and at 4%, 5%, and 6%, we've got the deficits listed there, obviously by the time we get to 6%, we're basically breaking even, and that's the rate that we would suggest going with, so that again, we're staying up with what the actual cost of providing water is, and so what does that mean on a regular, on a monthly basis, so if we went 4%, $2.10, if we went with the 6%, $3.30, and again, our bills are every two months, so that would be 660 additional on a water bill, and that's based on our average user of 1,200 cubic feet. So that's a little small there, I'm not sure if you can read it, but again, basically with the bill, with the water bills increasing 6%, it'll go up $6.60 in 2025 and about that same amount in 2026. And where does that put us? So, we looked at neighboring communities, so Aurora's current and proposed rates are over there on the left in green, and as you can see, and when we compare ourselves to our neighbors, we're right in line with everyone else, we're not the highest, we're not the lowest, the lowest on there is North Aurora, they actually supplement their water fund with other revenue to keep their bills lower, so really, they're not following the, the model of actually having your utility pay for itself, so that's, that's the one that's very small, but other than that, we're, even with our proposed changes, right in line with a lot of our neighbors. So again, just why we're saying to go with 6%, there's no cost of service deficit, so that's key for us, and we're basing that on assumed consumption levels, assumptions, consumption's been going down, it's a national trend, fixtures are getting more efficient, watering bans have gone into effect, and really, we don't want to fall too, too far behind, right now, we're placing, replacing about three miles of water main a year, we really should be in like seven to eight miles a year range, it's getting more and more expensive, we've seen dramatic increases in that cost over the years, and obviously, if we're not replacing the water mains, they're breaking more frequently, they're leaking, and that's just contributing to more water loss, which then means we're treating water that's just going right into the ground, so if we start falling too far behind now, then it's just going to be even harder for us to catch up. So, another consideration is the lead service line replacements, so again, I think I mentioned back in 2021, towards the, I think it was towards the end of 2021, the state came out with a new mandate that had various different steps that we needed to follow in terms of replacing all our lead service lines, at that time, we were around 19,000 and we have been replacing them, we're not mandated by the EPA to start those replacements until 2027, and at that point in time, the state law would require 3% replacement a year, that's what we've been budgeting for, that's what we've been building up to, unfortunately, at the end of 2024, on the federal level, not just applying to Illinois, they created a mandate for 10% replacement, so that's going to be about three times where we're at, so these water rate increases of 6% in '25 and '26, don't take that into account, there's still, we didn't want to artificially inflate them, there could be some changes, there are various entities out there that are challenging that, so we're hoping that that comes down, whether it comes all the way down to 3% or not, we don't really know at this time, so those are things that we'll be keeping an eye on and we can bring to the council's attention in the future, but for right now, we're comfortable knowing that we can stay on top of the 3% replacement that we're mandated to do. So, been talking about lead service lines, just really briefly pointing out what that is, so the water that leaves the plant, there's no lead in the water that we treat, there's no lead in the water main distribution system, the area where most of the lead is going to enter the water is going to be from the water main to the house, that's what we call the service line, so we have a variety of materials in the city, mostly copper, but we have, again, a little over 16,000 that are still lead, so we've been replacing those in various years, we've been fortunate to get federal funding that gets rolled out through the Illinois EPA State Revolving Loan Fund, to the tune of so far, somewhere around $7 million, so that in and of itself has paid for 700 of those replacements, we also replace anything that we encounter on a water main project or any utility project, if we excavate, or if we damage a line, we replace those because when there's a disturbed line, that's going to cause even more lead to get into the system, and lead is basically not, it's worse for, for children and pregnant women, but really, the, the goal is to just get every lead service line out of our system. Some other changes, the Illinois EPA has new water testing standards, so we test the city, we had previously been testing the city much less frequently and at a different sampling procedure, previously, we would take, we have people that sign up that have lead service lines, and what they would do is we would give them collection bottles and they would take a sample of the first liter, so they would fill up a bottle of water, we'd pick it up and we'd test it for lead, now, per the new regulations, we're testing the first and the fifth liter, and just knowing that what's sitting in the faucet hasn't been in contact with lead all night, but the stuff out in the street, which is where the fifth, out in the, out in the yard in the lead service line, the stuff that's been sitting there is going to have a higher concentration of lead, so we know that we're going to be higher than the threshold, we've always been below per the old testing standards, the water's the exact same, we're just testing a different part of the water, so we do believe that we're going to exceed that action level, and that really, the only thing it's going to do for us from a financial standpoint is it's going to mean that we have to start replacing that 3% in 2026 instead of 2027, so we're already planning for that, we've got, we, again, we've been budgeting for that year by year, increasing that to the point where we'll have that money sitting there and ready to go for 2026, and, and again, with the water mains, we don't want to fall too far behind on that, if the federal mandate comes into effect, we're going to need additional funding one way or the other, whether that's a flat fee or it gets based on usage, those would be discussions that we'll have, again, when we get closer to the time when we know we need to, we need to make that decision. And again, just a highlight of what we've been doing with the lead services, we have our data portal, it's on the website, anybody can access that, you can go on, you can see how many we've replaced, it actually updates every day at midnight, so if we replaced three or four of them today, that number will be 94, 95 tomorrow when you go to open that up, so we put all that information out there, a lot of that wasn't mandatory, but when we went through the inventory process, it just made sense to us to show all this data and make sure it's readily available for everyone to see. Also on that same website, are where we believe there are either suspected or known lead service lines, so that would be the, the black dots on the map, the green dots would be ones where we've confirmed, either by date of construction or by us having replaced it, that they are no longer lead, and you can see, and you would expect, that the bulk of them are in the older parts of town, right near the river, as we've expanded, most of those areas that have been built further away were built in a time where we no longer allowed lead, which would have been back in the 80s. So, I guess just to go over some final points, we've always done this, it happens every July, the only time it didn't happen was during COVID where we did have a reprieve, we put some capital improvements on hold, just knowing that there were budget issues, so we were able to get by that one year without an adjustment, but we've been in that 2% to 6.5% annually, we're always trying to cover the cost of service so that we don't have any fund balance issues, and the 6% increase, again, is only $3.30 per month, so again, 660 a bill, so it's, it's reasonable, and with the water main replacement being below the target, we're going to just continue have, having those higher water loss numbers that we keep seeing, although that's been on a downward decline over the past three, four years, we've been over 30% before, now we're down around 26, 27%, so the water main improvements that we do, do make a difference, so we want to keep that trend moving, and, and again, with the federal mandates, we're going to probably look at either, at some other funding mechanism if we do have to come up with that additional $9 million a year to do 1,600 a year versus 500 a year, so.
Thank you, Jason, so is this largely informational, just to let you know, especially for the new alderpeople, as soon as it hits the newspapers that we're looking at a rate increase, you're going to get all kinds of calls, this is so people understand why and so you can adequately answer questions, one other point to add, Congresswoman Underwood did put in to get 3.5 million, but she was uncertain of its future, as, as pretty much everything out of Washington is, but if we cross that 2027 deadline and need to start doing 1,600 homes, it's going to, we're going to have to do something to get money from somewhere, and that's only replacing the lead, typically, we try and do the water main and other projects along the way, once we tear up the streets, try and do everything and put it all back together, so, I don't know if anybody has any questions?
I do.
Alderman Franco?
Is this all going to be in the finance package when we do this, because there's a lot of good stuff in there?
Yeah.
Okay, I just want to make sure, because it's, it's good information there, thanks.
Mayor?
Alderman Mesiacos?
Thank you, maybe for some of our newer members here, would you clarify how the money is used or cannot be used in this?
Well, anything, yeah, anything...
This text line item?
Are you talking about the water?
You can't use the money for streets, correct?
Oh, correct, yeah, no, everything, yeah, so that's one of the reasons why we go through this, we worked with a consultant many years ago to come up with the water rate model, and we update that every year, yeah, it can, when you're collecting money from the utility, it all has to be spent on the utility.
Right, okay.
Mr. Minnick?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, whoa, sorry, Chris Minnick, Chief Financial Officer again, the water fund is actually set up to operate as its own business enterprise, in governmental accounting, there are certain types of activities that are historically or generally set up to run as independent business enterprises, they actually follow the, the business models of accounting, and the anticipation is that the services that are provided in that particular utility are actually covered by the user fees that are paid, and as Alderman Mesiacos indicated, you cannot use those funds for general governmental purposes, but they are utilized for the, for the activities of that particular utility.
Thank you, anybody else?
Yes.
Alderman Buck?
Just quickly before this gets pushed to finance, can you go over your definition once again of resident versus non-resident, that's going to be debated and discussed in detail in finance?
Sure, yeah, well, in, on that specific table, we had residential and non-residential, so non-residential, we charge our commercial and industrial users differently, but we also have some residents in Aurora Township that, you know, their wells failed and we have water main nearby and they want to hook up to the system, and then they pay a different rate, they pay a higher rate for, for a non-resident of the city.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you, Jason. Thank you, Chris. Last one, legal, this was a question that came before the IT Committee, and the attorneys are in town to answer some questions, so we'll try and keep it brief.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members, Dennis Walsh, I'm a partner at Klein, Thorpe and Jenkins, and I'm the outside environmental counsel for the City of Aurora. What's before the City Council is a request for what's called a highway authority agreement relating to property at 1125 Aurora Avenue, that property is now vacant, it once had a gas station and a small store there, those buildings have been demolished, there were six underground storage tanks associated with that property, in 1992, I believe, one tank was removed, and in 1990, in 2019, the remaining five tanks were removed, as part of that removal, there was contamination that was discovered on that site, and the gentleman to my left are the environmental consultants for the requester in this case, who's asking for the highway authority agreement, and what a highway authority agreement basically is, is a request to allow any contamination that may have migrated under, in this case, East Indian Trail Road, to remain in place and allow the right-of-way or the pavement to act as an engineered barrier to cut off any pathway that a human would be exposed to that stuff, in, in conjunction with that, they have agreed to enter into an indemnity agreement where if anybody was exposed to that contamination, or if the city encountered that contamination, in the future, with respect to like a public works project or whatever, the, the Requestor would remain responsible to the city for reimbursement for those costs and to, for any liability associated with that. The gentleman from Eagle can answer certainly any questions with respect to any testing that was done, where and when and what those results were, and I can be glad to answer any questions with respect to any liability issues, if, excuse me, or other issues you may have.
May I just ask, Mayor?
One second.
This isn't on our agenda?
It's not on the agenda.
Okay, okay.
Just for presentation, because they're a council and their attorneys are in towns, we'll try and keep it brief, just would you mind quickly stating your name and organization?
I'm Larry Birch, I'm a senior project manager and a professional geologist with the state, I have about 30 years of experience in the environmental field, I currently work with Eagle Environmental, and I'm in charge of trying to...
Mind stepping just a little closer to the mic?
I'm in, in charge of taking care of this and running this project through to the end with the state.
And my name is Brad Schumacher, I'm the owner of Eagle Environmental, been in the business for over 30 years.
Okay, so the only question I had was, I think for you and I conveyed to our legal team that we want to get some idea of what those core samples, what contaminants were in the ground, and then... in the ground. And then the only other question I had for the owner was what their mitigation plan was to either clean up the property or, or mitigate or encapsulate.
Well, the state allows you to do a risk-based closure. So some impact can remain in place. It just depends on exposure to people or the environment. So some will remain in place based on that risk model with the IEP. So not every bit of impact is removed from the property.
Okay.
And anything for construction purposes, any soil that does come out of that area does have to go to a special waste landfill. So that, you know, for their general purposes, they're trying to build another gas station. So any work that's done, excavated, that would be removed and disposed of as a special waste. So it wouldn't be going to a clean landfill or anything like that. So.
Does anybody on the council have any questions while they're here?
The initial testing that's been done, is it leaching anywhere besides being found on their property?
So do we have the map that you guys presented? Was that uploaded?
It's, it's there. I have a couple of copies. I do not have enough for all the council members, but I don't know if you have it. It's not that one. It's, it's this one, the slightly smaller area. We only have three copies.
So, yeah. So ba- basically, we, part of the EPA, we have to define the soil and the groundwater. Where's the soil stop? Where's the groundwater stop? It's a series of reports, series of stage ones, three sickers, corrective, you know, prior to the corrective action plan. So basically, that is a model, that map will show a model of will, the contamination at the sightline and where that is modeling to, hence the highway authority agreement. On the other side, we're also getting a highway authority agreement with IDOT, Illinois Department of Transportation. They've already approved it.
IDOT's already approved over the Broadway section of this. It's just the Illinois. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
Mayor, let me also point out that there hasn't actually been any testing in the right-of-way on Indian, Indian Trail Road. We're presuming, based on the modeling that's done under the environmental regulations, that it has migrated or can migrate. And that's the reason why they're asking for it to remain in place to the extent that it's there. But we simply don't know what's underneath the road at this point. And if, like I said, if in the future the city encounters it, it will be the responsibility of the remit of applicant to pay for that.
Understood. If there's no other questions, this is currently held up at IT. It'll probably move to Cal at the next meeting. If anybody else has follow-up questions, it was just because the attorney stopped in right before our council meeting to give you a chance to answer.
Mayor Lash, I have one quick question.
Alderman Burrow?
This is in Ward 1. What hap- what happens if the, there's a change in ownership in this current owner?
In the, in the environmental indemnification agreement, I've put in there that we will record that agreement against the property and connect as a lien in the event that there's an ownership change or the event that they don't honor their responsibilities under that agreement. So it'll, it'll, it'll go with the land and we'll foreclose, or foreclose on the lien to the extent we have to.
And just one follow-up. What is the estimated cost of, of this environmental cleanup?
I don't know that they have one. Do you?
I don't have an exact cost. We have a budget that we give to the Illinois EPA for each stage. So each stage of the investigation and to do the initial cleanup, they did haul some soil away initially around the tanks. And then at each stage, we do a budget because the owner gets reimbursement for certain costs through the IEP. Everything's handled through the Illinois EPA, each stage. So we're at the, the final stage. It's called the corrective action completion report would be the next report. We've already done a corrective action plan that includes getting this HAA. All of that, these restrictions are recorded with the deed when it's finally done. So it's, it's on the deed to the property.
Alderman Nunez?
Because this is so close to the river and our water plant, are we assured that there is no risk to the public whatsoever right now, the way it sits?
No, because we've done modeling for how far it could potentially go in time. And it falls within, it doesn't even cover most of that area, the updated area. Most of that area isn't covered by the model. So it should not. It's all near surface impact. It's not deep groundwater or anything that would affect you. It's within the top 10 to 15 feet.
Okay. If there's no further questions, thank you very much. Thanks for coming down.
Thank you, Councilman.
Okay. Next section, public comment. Madam Clerk, do we have any members of the public wishing to offer public comment?
We do, Mr. Mayor.
Madam Clerk, will you please read the, read the rules for public comment?
Pursuant to the Open Meetings Act, all persons shall be permitted an opportunity to address public officials under the rules established and recorded by the council. Under our rules, any person may address the committee of the whole for up to three minutes with a maximum of 30 minutes allotted for all public comment. No person other than the timekeeper or the chair for the purpose of maintaining order may interrupt a person recognized for public comment during his or her comments. Members of the committee of the whole shall not engage with nor respond to a speaker during the time set aside for public comment. Staff is directed to follow up with members of the public with respect to any concerns raised during public comment within the scope of the city's authority following the adjournment of this meeting.
Madam Clerk, will you please read the name of the first person wishing to offer public comment?
Our first person is Sun Knight.
You have three minutes, beginning now?
Thank you. Here to congratulate the line of succession to the new chief of police, Matt Thomas. Mayor Richard Irvin ensure a smooth transition by choosing Deputy Chief Matt Thomas to be chief of police. The order is crucial for ensuring smooth transition of leadership and continuity of command. By putting chief of police Thomas, it reduces disruption at APD and potential instability. It advanced the employee of APD. It provided opportunity for growth. The current mayor of Aurora, Illinois, John Lash, who is anti APD and defend the police, mayor wants to bring an outsider to run Aurora APD. Bringing an outsider to the police department like Kane County Sheriff, your choice, Ron Hain, is negative. Kane County Sheriff Ron Hare does not have understanding the department's history. Police officers have strong bond with each other. Bringing an outsider can disrupt their relationships. He's not street smart when it comes to Aurora. He'll bring different ideas. Maybe the employees do not want an outsider. Ron Hain is just a negative impact on APD. Ron Hare will just bring disruption to APD. Here to thank Mayor Richard Irvin for picking someone within the department of APD instead of an outsider. The new chief of police has many years of policing experience in Aurora, Illinois. So he deserved the position, not Ron Hain. Here to celebrate the defeat of Ron Hain, Kane County Sheriff, for not getting the APD top job. So he cannot fool everyone at all times. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Are there any other members of the public wishing to offer public comment, Madam Chair?
There are. Mr. Mayor, the next speaker is Rick Lawrence.
Mr. Lawrence, you have three minutes.
How are you? First, I wanted to commend the Finance Department or the Finance Committee for holding that item that was to just give the VNA $500,000 without any idea of what it was for, just that Alex decided to promise it to somebody at one point. So that was really great, you asking those questions and holding that, even though that the CFO and the mayor's office was suggesting to move it forward without any details of what the money was for. But it's just 500,000. What I wanted to really talk about was this new debt. John, you ran on how Rich Irvin was running up debt and how projects were corrupt and everything else. And, you know, that you weren't going to do that. Not in the job three weeks and all of a sudden you're taking on another $100 million worth of debt. And first thing you do is throw on a tax increase for the taxpayers. You know, you got to work the problem. You don't just go right to the taxpayers. Aurora has the fourth highest tax rate in the nation in large cities. Bridgeport, Newark, and Detroit are the only ones that beat us. You cannot just keep going back to the taxpayers. Our tax rate, city tax rate, is nearly five times higher than Naperville's. They're a direct competitor of ours. So Alderman Bug, if you live in Stonebridge, why the hell would anybody buy the Aurora side of Stonebridge? You have the same house, same school, same neighborhood, but you're going to pay thousands of dollars more in taxes. I saw this huge discussion on census because we lost a couple million dollars. Virtually no discussion, and man, we push it right through, $95 million worth of debt. 95 million, no problem. And I know some people will say, oh, the tax increase is only $100 or something like that. Our taxes are higher than everybody. You cannot keep going back. I heard, I heard a comment, Mr. Shannon stood up here and said, who cares what the wealthy or whatever say, and we should ignore them in, in another topic. Well, I'll tell you something. We don't have wealth, high wealth in this town at all left. What we do have is a strong middle class that some own businesses, some work really hard. You see them trying to take care of their homes. They're trying to figure out where their kids should go to school. And now we're just going to keep throwing at debt. You know why? Because it's the easy thing to do. You know what's hard? Working the problem and figuring it out. Not just say, I'm throwing on another $100 million worth of debt, when that was the biggest criticism of the last group. You didn't work the problem. You've only been here three weeks. And you need to finish that. So I'll go with free the taxpayers.
Thank you for your comments. Madam Clerk, would you please read the name of the next person wishing to offer public comment?
Ray Hall.
Good evening to Mayor Lash and the city council. I'm here to speak about the, the water rate increases that we've just heard the presentation on. And my concern is, when you look at your water bill, and this is for the, especially for the new aldermen that have never questioned this, but in addition to the water bill itself, there is nearly $40 worth of fees attached to your water bill that have nothing to do with water. They have to do with stormwater management. And, and so the first one is the EPA mandated long-term control plan, which has to do with the amount of overflows of sanitary sewage into the Fox River. They, they're mandated that only so many can go through in, in a year's time. And, and so Fox Metro has increased their capacity down there. There had been some talk about putting up an additional plant at the corner of River Street where the old baseball field and the Park District building. So I haven't heard anything about that. But my, my, I'm, I'm questioning is, this fee has come on since I've been gone. I've been gone 10 years. And so that fee was not there when I left. I want to know, is there a set aside fund where that money is going to be used strictly for that? And the reason I ask that is because the, the other one, the storm wa- storm, stormwater management fee has been there nearly 30 years. Alderman Seville can give me the exact amount of years because I think he was the only one that was here when it started. And that was put together primarily because the southeast side and the southwest side of town were experiencing all kinds of sanitary sewage backups. And so those fees were put in there to help to, to eliminate those basement backups. And that has been done. And this has been going on. And at that time, wards eight, nine, and 10 did not, they were not experiencing it. So eight, nine, and 10 was paying for the problems of the near east side and the near west side problems. And so what the city did was they turned around and they said, well, what we're going to do is, we're going to, you know, fix the water lines. And so my concern is, you know, I don't know what the water consumption, not water consumption, but water availability fee. That's another 20, 20 something dollars. And so we can't just keep going back and going back. My wife and I, there's two people in our house. Our water bill is averaging 150 bucks or so every two months. And that's a lot. There was a time when there was four people in the house and it didn't take that much. So I think we need to take a look at these fees that have nothing to do with water and as you're asking for another increase on the water rates. We need to be looking at these things that are associated with the sewer. And then we have to, so we pay for the water to come in and then we have to pay to literally get rid of the crap. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Madam Clerk, do we have any other members of the public wishing to make public comment?
We do not, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. We'll move on to the committee reports. Chairman Mike Seville of the BZNE Committee.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The BZNE Committee met June 3, 2025, and reviewed the following, I'm sorry, they met, we met May 28, 2025, and reviewed the following items. The first four are really related, so I'll read all of them first and then we'll discuss it. 25-0421, an ordinance, the next thing, property located at 1231 Mitchell Road to the city of Aurora, Illinois, 60505. 25-0422, an ordinance establishing a condition use plan development at 1231 Mitchell Road to be incorporated on the existing Aurora Turner's plan description under parcel A and amending chapter 49 of the Code of Ordinances. City of Aurora, by modifying the zoning map attached thereto to an underlying zoning of B2 Business District General Retail. 25-0423, an ordinance vacating a portion of dedicated right-of-way for High Street located north of East Indian Trail in Kane County, Aurora, Illinois. And 25-0424, a resolution approving the final plat for Aurora Tunner's Club subdivision located 1231 Mitchell Road, 1215 Mitchell Road, and 500 East Indian Trail. And this all came about because the originally High Street was going to connect to Mitchell, and that was vacated. And there's no need to have that anymore. So vacation will be benefiting the Aurora Turner's Club. The Aurora Turner's Club is represented here this evening. They also took a vote on this as well, approved this. And then staff is here to add anything that you have to add with regards to the council.
Consent?
With, with no further questions, these four items will be added to the consent agenda.
Consent for all four? Okay.
The next two items are no, no action needed, if you want to read them?
The next two items are resolutions. The first one is 25-0441, resolution approving the final plat for lots 1 to 51 of Abbey Meadow subdivision on vacant land located on the east side of Radent Road at Mesa Lane Extended. And the other one is related as well, so I'll read that, too. 25-0442, resolution approving a final plat on Abbey Meadow subdivision located on the east side of Radent Road at Mesa Lane Extended for right-of-way dwelling, party wall, 1130 use. This has to do with the development next to Marmion. This is the Lenar Group. 43 buildings, 220 townhomes. The, there'll be six models. They'll be built in such a style of buildings, both traditional and urban, anywhere from 1717 square feet to 2,221 square feet. Again, this is off Butterfield. All units will have three bedrooms. And they're all being hooked up for conduit for EV charging stations and solar panels. And also they'll be meeting energy star certification requirements. John Philip Chuck, attorney, is here for Lenar Group. If anybody has any questions. If not, then these are not, these are appealable, appealable items only. So we don't need to have it under consent or agenda unless somebody wants to peel it. You have by 5 o'clock today for the newer alderman. If it's not appealed by, I'm sorry, 5 o'clock by tomorrow, it's not appealed by tomorrow, then it will not go to the city council.
Any questions on these two agenda items?
I have a question.
Alderman Larson?
Thank you. So these are right next to existing townhouses. How are the prices of these townhouses going to compare to the existing ones? And are the townhouses generally comparable?
I believe the, the price point starts at 400,000 to what, 400, was it 40,000? was it forty thousand? But they can address this.
Good evening. Tim Kellogg with Temple and Property Consultants here representing Lenar. So your, your question on the existing townhomes, ours are going to be in the four-hundred and forty-five, four-hundred to four-hundred-and-forty-five thousand range for new. Savannah Crossing's recent sale price had been about three-hundred-and-sixteen thousand or so. So these will be significantly higher than that.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Yes, if there's no other questions, that's the report from BZNE, Mayor.
Thank you, Chairman Seville. Chairman Ted Messiakos, do you please give us the Finance Committee report?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Finance Committee met on May 29th, 2025 and reviewed the following items. Item twenty-five dash zero four four six, ordinance, providing for the issuance of not to exceed ninety-five million general obligation bonds of the city of Aurora, Kane, DuPage, Kendall, and Will Counties, Illinois for the purpose of financing capital improvements in and for said city, providing for the levy of direct annual tax sufficient to pay the principal of interest, the principal of and interest on said bonds and authorizing the proposed sale of said bonds to the purchaser thereof. This is part of an already discussed with previous administration, total one-twenty million in bonds that we're going to ultimately look to go to sale for. We've already issued a thirty million, approval for thirty million. This one has an extra five million tacked on to it in addition, so it's going to be a total of one-twenty-five. Mr. Minnick, if you can please share a few more items about this.
Thank you. Chris Minnick, Chief Financial Officer. The ordinance in the packet, as Chairman Messiakos indicated, does authorize the issuance of bonds in an amount not to exceed ninety-five million dollars for 2025 general obligation bond Series C. As mentioned, A and B were issued a little bit earlier this fiscal year, actually in January, and those proceeds are being utilized as the first tranche of, of funding for the projects that are under consideration in the current bond issue. So these bonds are being issued as tax-exempt general obligation bonds of the city and they're issued to finance infrastructure improvement projects, many of which are already underway, the last of which was recently approved at, at a recent City Council meeting. The projects that are contemplated for financing are fire station construction and relocations for Fire Station Nine and Fire Station Thirteen, the fire, the satellite fire station, fire headquarters, EMA facility, an emergency operations center known as Fire Station Four. That is the item that has not yet been started but was recently approved at a City Council meeting, the River Edge Park Expansion Project, the Farnsworth built a roadway improvements, and last disbursements on the Public Works Facility. These are level debt service bonds with a twenty-year term and they do pledge the city's full faith and credit to repayment of the bonds and the debt mechanisms present. The property tax impact for a three-hundred-thousand-dollar house is anticipated at about nine dollars and twenty-five cents per month, as we have been discussing. The bonds will be competitively bid through an online process. Spear Financial is the city's municipal finance advisor. They actually will host an online bidding process where the bond houses will submit a true, a lowest interest cost. That lowest interest cost will continue to reset until such time as no one beats it for a period of two minutes. Then the lowest otherwise qualified bidder will win the, the bid and the, the bonds will be issued by that particular bond house. The ordinance is a parameters ordinance. It authorizes the issuance of the bonds so long as certain parameters are met at the time of sale. The parameters are typically set a little, set wide enough to allow for changes in market conditions over the next several weeks and there is an authorization for staff to proceed with the sale, assuming that the parameters of the ordinance are met. The total of the bonds issued, as indicated, will not exceed ninety-five million. The exact paramount will be determined at the time of the bond sale, however, we do not anticipating issuing at this point in time more than ninety million dollars in bonds. As I mentioned, it's a parameters ordinance. That extra, extra leeway is put into the ordinance in case of changes in market conditions, primarily interest rates or, or other types of, types of changes in the bond terms. The current timeline calls for the bond sale and closing to occur, to occur in late June with the closing in early to mid-July. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions on this agenda item?
Unfinished.
Any other members wish to ask any questions?
Mayor Lash, I have a couple of questions.
Alderman Higginson. One is, we had a, you mentioned a project that was already completed and that's the Public Works Facility. So why was that, why was that not part of a previous bond issue?
It actually was. We've, for, for a couple of these projects, we've been utilizing a drawdown schedule to try to minimize the interest costs. So we're at the point where there are a couple of items that were left that were approved as part of the Public Works Facility that were, that are still to be ordered or that are coming in as we're, as we're moving forward. They're not necessarily the building per se, they're some of the items that are going along with getting the building up and operational to its full capacity.
And also during a previous presentation you were making about some previous bonds, you stated that there was some bonds coming off, going to be paid off and is that factored into the equation?
It is factored into the equation. We did have some bonds that came off at the end of 2024.
And then my, my last question is the, the source of the payments for the debt service, is that, is that flexible going in the future? In other words, if, if the revenues from the casino come in as expected, can then we abate the tax, the tax levy and, and pay the bonds through gaming taxes?
We absolutely can. We will have an opportunity to abate the taxes each and every year. Actually, this is true for all of the city's bond issues. We have an, an opportunity to abate the taxes each and every year for debt service purposes. And in fact, many of the bonds that the city has actually outstanding are abated on an annual basis and they're paid from revenues other than property taxes. So we would have that opportunity each and every year.
Thank you. Alderman Noonan?
Regarding the project at River Edge, have we explored revenue bonds at all or a public-private partnership to help alleviate the cost of that overall project?
We have not taken a look at the, at, at a, at a revenue bond per se for River Edge Park. That would actually pledge the revenues that are generated by the, by the park and only by the park to repayment. There could be a study that, that could be done for those items, however, the, the attendance and the operations of the, and the revenues of River Edge Park have not been sufficient to this point to provide for operations and debt service and that type of a coverage ratio.
Thank you. Any other members? Okay, no further questions, this item will go on unfinished business.
One more thing, too. Minnick, we had a discussion regards to the extra five million and that's pretty much just a contingency of sorts. And that you would be coming back to City Council before acquiring that five percent for approval in terms of any specific project items that would need to be tapped into that five million to complete.
Yes, what, what we're shooting for is ninety million dollars to go into the project fund. Bond conditions right now are such that bonds are being issued at a discount. If we would need to issue more than ninety million dollars in bonds, we would be of a, of an opinion to be able to come back to the City Council for any kind of authority to spend any of that five million dollars that would be additional on, on any project types of expenses. So in other words, we would be coming back to you if we needed more than ninety million dollars to complete the project.
Right, all right. Thank you so much for that clarification.
One other point to clarify too, it's sort of pay-as-you-go, we use it before we borrow, we don't borrow it and then put it in a bank account somewhere, correct?
Actually, we will be putting this in a bank account and drawing it down over the summer and over, and over the, the next construction year and a half, probably about a year.
And then what was the amount that we did on the last bond and it was forty million, but it came back less?
It was actually thirty-five million and it was consistent of a taxable series, twenty-twenty-five B, and a, a tax exempt series in a twenty-twenty-five A. Those were issued in January, I believe.
Thank you. Alderman White?
So you, you mentioned that this, the money would go into a bank account and then we would draw from it?
Correct.
Is there, are we allowed to earn interest on this at all?
We are and we do. We, in fact, on the casino bonds, we are just now starting to draw those for payment out to Penn Gaming. We have, we have actually earned some significant interest, interest on that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Alderman Larson?
I guess one follow-up question on that note. How did, how does the interest in the bank account compare to the interest we'd be paying for the bonds?
We will be paying roughly the same amount, probably. It's about, the true interest cost for the market conditions today are roughly four-point-four percent. That's probably about the maximum that we can get on our investments. We're very limited, the city is very limited as a municipal entity in, in terms of what it can invest in. So it would probably be a bit of a push in terms of the borrowing cost vis-à-vis what we would earn in interest. We're not going to be able to keep all of the proceeds in interest because we'll have to keep a portion of it liquid so that we can draw it down.
Thank you. Any other questions? Unfinished business?
Mayor, we'll put it unfinished. Next item, twenty-five dash zero four four nine, resolution to select GNV Urban Art as a consultant to use existing funds for the Luminara Festival 2025, the city's annual interactive light and sound experience.
Consent.
We did have a presentation at Finance. I'm not sure if anybody wants an update on that here at the council at this point.
Does anybody want an update? If there's no one here to make a presentation, we can have it at City Council. Chris is here.
Good evening, members of City Council. I'm happy to go through the slides. I know we've had a few presentations tonight. I'm Chris Arona, Director of Community Services. Going to highlight our 2025 Luminara Light Festival. So briefly, we'll go over our inaugural event. We'll talk a little bit about what exactly Luminara is. We do have new members on City Council. We'll talk about our planning process, how it was different from 2024, as well as the selection of our vendor, and then next steps as we gear up for the second annual festival this October. So the first question is, you know, what is Luminara? So we've got a, about a minute video here, which I'll play, and it'll sort of take you through the main weekend of what was a month-long festival. So the, the main weekend occurred over Columbus weekend and as you can see, we had live entertainment as well as a whole mess of interactive art installations. the main weekend over Columbus Day weekend. This was a free event without tickets, so sometimes that is hard to track the actual number of visitors. As far as economic impact goes, we tried to pull some data from the Aurora Area Convention and Visitors Bureau, as well as the Aurora Regional Alliance. We estimated about fifty, fifty-eight percent of the visitors were from Aurora and then forty-two percent were from outside of the city. I think a, an interesting number is seven percent were from over fifty miles away. So we're hoping to increase that number to really build this as more of a regional event. So we'll keep moving forward here. Additional by the numbers, we had fifty-five individual art installations. Some of these were very small in scale, just a few hundred dollars, and then others were much larger, as you saw from the video. We had eighteen days of entertainment at the Sonic Runway, so we really tried to leverage the art installations for the entire thirty days or so. I do want to thank Danielle Tofano for coordinating many of these much smaller scale events that occurred on Water Street Mall. So we tried to attempt to invite all of our boards and commissions, other local partners. We also had some different themed nights as well. The city did receive one grant in the amount of a hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars and some change through the Illinois DCEO. We do have a few grant opportunities that we're seeking, as well as additional sponsorship, so we'll talk about those on a later slide. And then lastly, we tried to measure success both on visitors that attended the events as well as feedback that was collected. So we received lots of positive comments, but I did want to list a few, not negative comments, but just additional areas of enhancement. So we offered three different types of surveys. So we had our vendor and artist who we partnered with, as well as our attendees, and then local businesses. So as you can see, we do have some areas of enhancement, rather than areas of improvement, I'd like to say. So we, we really are going to be looking at our marketing and promotion strategy, seeing what worked, seeing what didn't work, since this was our first year. Some folks wanted additional food trucks, increased seating, large variety of live entertainment. And then some of our local businesses wanted a decentralization of light exhibits, so when we pull up our map for 2025, we'll talk about how it's a little bit different than 2024. Enhanced marketing promotion and further website integration. So here is just a quick list of our Luminara planning, planning team. I did want to highlight that lots of different departments and divisions go into planning. So some folks don't see some of that behind-the-scenes work that's conducted. So our facilities team, legal, finance, community services, special events, communications, our mayor's office, Public Works, our electricians, purchasing, public art, APD, AFD, and many volunteers really make this happen. So here are proposed boundaries. This is a little bit larger than in 2024. We will be working with our vendor on refining the map based on some of the art installations that we're hoping to have. So this might change, but over the next two months, we'll be looking to finalize things. So to talk about our planning timeline, we started planning really when the event ended in 2024, but we were able to release an RFP seeking a one-stop-shop vendor back in March. Last year, for anyone on City Council, you might remember, many different proposals coming through. We actually had seven different requests for proposals and we were approving contracts more on a à la carte basis. For 2025, we're looking to seek a partner who can really handle all of the art, art installations with one contract through the city. So we hope on the backend, that'll help with coordinating and tracking payments and planning and all of the logistics that go with planning an event like this. All the responses were due in March 26th and I believe we had nine proposals. So I know this is a little small here, but we included our top three. We looked at creativity and concepts, experience and expertise, budget alignment, community engagement, and operational excellence. When factoring all of those in, we felt that GNV Urban Art was the best partner to help us plan out Luminara. They have a we felt that GNV Urban Art was the best partner to help us plan out Luminora. They have a wide variety of curators, professionals in visual design, festival production, and live event experience, really the things that we're hoping they can help us, the city, plan out this event. They've also done work in North Carolina, Arizona, and even Italy on similar-sized events. So here's a look at what some of the art installations might look like. Like I mentioned, our vendor is going to be working with artists potentially all around the country and even internationally, potentially, to put together some of our main acre installations. So here is our G A R Military Museum. We did do something similar here last year. It's sort of a replaying two-minute projection map, and for anyone that got to see it last year, it's a it's pretty cool how they're able to make this work. We're also looking at a laser show, both potentially shooting up into the air or shooting against the side of a building. So think about the paramount along the river. Potentially an LED bonfire. We're hoping all of these are going to be interactive, sometimes with sound. Here's our Interactive Light and Sculpture Garden example, which could be in Monday Park. Here is a Pixel Starscape concept, which would be right down Water Street Mall. So for anybody that was here last year, think of the Sonic Runway. Sonic Runway was great, but it was a little confined, so folks maybe in wheelchairs or who weren't able to walk the whole length had to step over a little bit larger of a barrier. So we're hoping that this will be just as successful, but allow it to be a little bit more open. Here's a Dance with Lasers concept that would be projected against Leland Tower. This was projected against Wabonzi Community College last year, and basically you you do dance moves, and then it shoots it up potentially a hundred feet in the air. So it was pretty fun. This is The Last Ocean by Jen Lewin. So Jen Lewin provided a different art installation last year, but this is for adults and kids alike. You you run across the installation, and it changes with each, you know, foot or hand or whatever you press against. And then the Barrel Boys will be coming back for twenty twenty-five. This is a looks like a pretty easy concept. It's just barrels essentially with lights. This was among one of our most popular installations last year, with many families taking pictures outside of it. And then in between all of that, you know, we're looking to do some smaller sculptural installations, interactive installations, potentially laser installations. And I think one key area of enhancement is the activation of our David L. Pierce Gallery on the third floor, just a couple of buildings over. We think that we can put together something great indoors. And if you haven't visited the third floor, we do have a new exhibit opening up this Friday for First Friday. One of the some feedback that we received is to have more variety and entertainment. So we've already booked three these three bands here, among others, so Sixteen Candles, Hairbangers Ball, and Selena. I'd say those are pretty diverse. They also have a pretty big following, so we're hoping for some larger crowds as well. So here's our proposed budget. It is a little smaller to see. It's about roughly what we paid for last year to put on the Luminora Festival. This budget is broken into two parts, really. The GNV portion of the contract, which has some marketing, art installations, roving performers, as well as the logistics and production fees, with a small amount of contingency. And then on the city side, we have live entertainment, city marketing, and city contingency funding. One change that we did add to the resolution that was not in the original Finance Committee packet was to allow city staff the ability to take some of that city contingency funding and potentially modify GNV's contract. The reason for that is, we didn't want to have potentially two pots of funds paying for, let's say, one art installation. This would also save us time and then not have us have to go back to City Council for a modification. This doesn't increase the budget in any way. This just gives us a little bit more flexibility in planning this summer. Additionally, on top of this, we have forty-two thousand in sponsorships that are already in hand. We're hoping to increase that number significantly. As I highlighted in the Finance Committee, that's not going to increase our budget. That is going to reduce the city's total burden. Additionally, we have two hundred thousand dollars in grants pending. So once again, if that grant is received, the budget will remain the same. However, the city's share of payment will reduce. I don't think we're going to be there yet where this will be a self-sustaining event, where the city will have no cost share. However, that is a goal in the future. So here are the next steps. We're hoping for approval on June tenth. We will have our vendor GNV come out at some point in June to walk the site, talk with city staff, you know, really hit the ground running with planning. July and August, we will have artist selection, finalize location of installations, and, you know, really get into the meat of planning the event. September would be final production and testing and logistics, figuring out with all of our vendors how all of the installations will get installed. And then, you know, October tenth is going to be the kickoff. So I know it's not for four or five months or so, but it'll be here before we know it. So with that, you know, I will open the door up to any questions. I believe our vendor GNV might be on the Zoom call, but I would turn it over to Communications to make sure if they're here.
Mayor Lash?
One second. Do you guys want to introduce yourselves?
Irina, we can't hear you.
Tony?
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you.
Okay. So my name is Irina Kanishiva. I'm the founder of GNV Open Art, and I have experienced over ten years producing festivals of different kind of arts, murals, sculptures, and now it's digital arts. And Charles is my partner, and he also has a long journey and great experience in producing events and managing technology, solving problems. And we're excited to work with the studio of Aurora to produce this event even bigger than the last year.
Thank you. Alderman Burrow?
Yes, Chris, I have a question regarding the festival revenues. Is there an opportunity? I didn't see it in the presentation, to generate revenues from, you know, concessions or maybe a small entrance fee for the concerts?
So yes, last year, we did have a small revenue sharing with with our two brothers, I believe. I don't know if we'll be able to do an entrance fee, per se. It depends on how everything is set up. Last year, we had folks who would come into the area where the food trucks were. That's where the live entertainment was. And then you can easily exit and then visit the other installations. If it were ticketed, it would probably have to be ticketed for everyone, not just the folks potentially visiting the concert area. We would really have to, I think, redesign how we would do Luminora. But certainly, like you said, if there's opportunities on top of sponsorships and grants, if we're able to share concessions. We didn't do merchandise last year. That's something we can definitely consider. I think we're slowly ramping up on our capability for what we can make Luminora.
Alderman Sibyl?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to thank all the people that are on the committee for this and all the planning and effort that is, I think, very impressive with regard to putting this on this event on again for the second year. And also, I want to thank Chris for shedding light on this festival. And my question is, with the unofficial survey that you conducted last year, where you thought people were from that attended, did we get any feedback from the business community or restaurants to see if they benefited from this festival?
So I think that's definitely another area of enhancement, is to try and further leverage our partnerships with our restaurants, to try and capture some additional data on top of maybe some qualitative data that we captured last year, to see if we can get some hard quantitative data when it comes to potential sales or sales tax revenue. So we're going to be very intentional about enhancing how we do our surveys. You know, as you saw, we were only able to get seven businesses. We'd really like to double or triple that. The same thing with the number of folks who took the survey when they were at the festival to those who took it maybe a few days after. As far as our, you know, our artists and our vendors, that number will stay roughly the same, just because we're going to have somewhere around the same number of artists. So, you know, we're really hoping to increase the data that's captured, so then we can continue making refinements.
So is that a polite way of saying that you're not sure if the business has increased or not?
Yes. I think I think that's an area that we can further explore.
I don't think that there was a lot of data collected, but I do think so Danielle Tufano is going to be working to better integrate some of our downtown activities with cross promotions with our downtown businesses to make sure that they're benefiting. We've moved her from Communications over to Economic Development to further emphasize that. She's been a key part of the previous one and this one. The other thing, I just want to acknowledge that you're doing this with all without the Downtown Art Director position, which is out, and we're taking in applications. It'll be interviewing for that position soon. So really, kudos to you and everybody that's working as a as a functioning committee to pull this together without that person that should be at the helm.
Yeah, I just want to say it's a really a neat concept that we did here last year. And you could tell by just seeing the smiles on peoples and their families and kids' faces, they loved it, just had a great time.
Absolutely.
No further. Alderwoman Bade? Alderman Bug?
I defer to you.
Alderwoman Bade?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chris, last time we had B N S F marketing partner. Is B N S F on board this time, too?
So we did have a partner in Metra. We we do maintain that relationship. We are due now that this contract is coming to fruition to, you know, to check in, you know, introduce our vendor with our Metra contact to see, you know, if there's an opportunity. They provided really in-kind marketing throughout all of their stops throughout the month of October, so we're hoping that they're interested. We also decorated two train cars. I didn't get a chance to to visit that, but we it would be great to at least do the in-kind marketing again. I don't know if we would be able to scale up for the train cars for twenty twenty-five.
And have we reached out to Pace Bus?
So that'll be another marketing opportunity. So at this time, we have not, but that will be part of the next four months of planning.
Okay. And I know because of the weather, we couldn't have the drone show last year, but it was very successful when we did the lights event. So is there a plan to include a drone show with tentative date in this, or?
So you're right. The drone show was supposed to be Sunday night, but it was very, very windy that night. Because Festival of Lights will also be doing a drone show, we chose to look at alternate installations, so possibly the laser show or whatever our vendor thinks might be successful. So the city of Aurora will be doing a drone show, but it'll be the Festival of Lights in November.
And the total cost of this event, the whole event, will be five hundred fifty thousand dollars?
So that's the estimated cost.
Estimated.
You know, we're certainly not. We're not going to exceed that. Like I mentioned, if we are able to get some revenue sharing, sponsorships, and grants, that will reduce the, you know, the city's burden.
And that includes two hundred forty-two thousand dollars? Two hundred thousand dollars and forty-two thousand dollars from like that in this five hundred fifty estimate is including two hundred forty thousand dollars?
So the the two hundred thousand dollar grant is pending. The city has not heard back if we're receiving that. The forty-two thousand dollars in sponsorships will, I guess, reduce the five hundred fifty thousand dollars that's been budgeted from the city. So if if we had Luminora today, we would subtract the forty-two from the five fifty, and that would be the city's share. And we're hoping that number goes much lower throughout the next several months.
Thank you.
Alderman Bug?
Thank you. Yeah, I was right on cue. I asked you about the grants. The state grant, this is a state grant, correct?
Correct.
It is? Okay. Is it a pass-through from the federal government to the state, or is it a state grant?
I believe it is a state grant.
Okay.
Last year's grant required a one-to-one match, so if that is the requirement for this grant, we would have plenty of leveraging funds to accept.
Okay. So then, what is the name of the grant, if you know? Is it the Illinois Arts Council or?
I don't have the the exact name in front of me. I do know it's from D C E O, and it's a tourism-type grant. Tomorrow morning, we can send you the the exact name.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
No further question. Do you have a question? Sorry?
No, I don't have a question.
No further questions, just go on consent.
Yeah, it's going to go on consent, that at the committee, you could tell that Mr. Ragona had really put his heart into it, put a lot of thought, and he's also understood the ability of the vendor bringing in some local artists for their participation as well, and also very conscientious of the accessibility issue and improving that also with our exhibit. So I thank you very much for what you've been doing, like the mayor said, taking on something that typically you wouldn't be taking on.
Thank you.
Next item, Mayor, twenty-five, item twenty-five dash zero four five eight, an ordinance amending the annual budget for the fiscal year beginning January first, twenty twenty-five, and ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Amendment number two for the twenty twenty-five fiscal year. This this amendment is a decrease in approximately three hundred and fifty thousand, nine hundred dollars, if I'm correct, or eight hundred dollars, if I'm correct, and
Consent.
Mr. Minnick is not here. If he has questions, it looks like he has another representative here with us this evening.
Do any members of the council have any questions? I guess you're off the hook. No further questions, this item will go on consent.
Well, if there's no further questions, Mayor, that's a consent, and that's the that's the end of the report. Thank you very much.
Alderman Carl Franco, Chairman of the PHST Committee, if you'll give us that report.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Public Health, Safety, and Transportation Committee met on May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five, reviewed the following items. Two-five dash zero three two-three, a resolution authorizing the emergency management coordinator to sign the Illinois Public Works Mutual Aid Network Agreement. This agreement allows for sharing resources to address disasters and accessing trained personnel and specialized equipment. We have been a member since two thousand and nine, and the annual cost is five hundred dollars.
Consent.
There are no further questions. This item will go on consent.
Mr. Mayor, that concludes the PHST Committee Report.
There. Thank you, Chairman Franco. Chairwoman Wani Garza, please give us the I A T Committee Report.
Was cancelled. We don't have no items in the day.
Thank you. Then have former Vice Chair Carl Franco give the R A P Committee Report. It's my understanding this was during transition.
Yes, so, Mr. Mayor, let me get this here. The Rules Administration Procedure Committee met on May twenty twenty-five, reviewed the following items. Two-five dash zero three seven four, an informal discussion on the upcoming ordinance in many Chapter twelve of the Aurora Code of Ordinances titled Buildings and Billing Regulations to Adopt the Twenty Twenty-four I Series of Codes and Recommended Amendments. Mr. Curley and his staff have been talking about a variety of changes, a lot of amendments to what their the codes are and the process. We probably will be going through that, Mr. Curley, maybe another couple of meetings for the R A P Committee. So right now, it's just an informal process going through. A lot of it is is basic textual type of stuff and a couple code amendments. So we'll, instead of going through some of that today, we'll have a big report, Mr. Curley, have a big report, and we'll finalize with this.
There's no action needed on this item.
No, that was just informational. And that concludes the R A P Committee Report.
Thank you, Chairman Franco. Okay, new business. We have two items on new business. If the clerical, please read the two agenda items.
Twenty-five zero three eight one, a motion authorizing and directing the Chief Human Resources Officer to execute a settlement agreement on behalf of the city in workers' compensation claim number twenty-one Q zero five one five five nine one two two. And twenty-five zero four six three, a motion authorizing and directing the Chief Human Resources Officer to execute a settlement agreement on behalf of the city in workers' compensation claim number twenty-four Q zero five M three four two four nine five.
There are any questions on these two agenda items? Okay, so we will see these two agenda items on new business at the next City Council meeting. Under the consent agenda.
Would you need consent on that?
Yep. Okay, this concludes a portion of our regularly scheduled meeting. We are in need of a closed session. We're in need of a closed session pursuant to the following section of the Open Meetings Act, Section two C one, to discuss the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, or dismissal of a specific employee of the public body, and Section two C eleven, to discuss litigation. Do I have a Do I have a motion to enter into closed session and therefore adjourn this committee of the whole meeting with no further final action or public business to take place for the purposes of committee of the whole? Motion was made by Alderwoman Patty Smith, seconded by Alderman Carl Franco. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Barrero?
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza? Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Yunus?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Saville?
Yes.
Alderman Benuevos?
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bade?
Yes.
Alderman Larson?
Yes.
Alderman White?
Yes.
Twelve yes to your honor.
Motion carries. So we are going into adjournment, and if it works for everybody, I think we can take five minutes, just come back here. And by then, we'll ask public to clear, so we can use this room for a closed session for two agenda items.